Now call this regular school committee meeting to order Monday, October 4th, 2021. Mr. Walsh, would you lead us in the salute to the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. School committee chair report, I have nothing to report at this time. Resource committee.
Resource and school buildings, we had an informal meeting where no votes or discussion was taking place. Mr. Shalapu just enlightened us on to what was on the agenda for tonight, which will be some voting items.
All right, school building needs.
That was part of the same meeting.
All right, thank you. Any questions, concerns, comments, seeing none. Policy committee.
Nothing new to report at this time. We did not meet recently, but I will say that I am happy to announce we're working on revamping the policy book and I'm finally done moving over the table of contents. So we'll be modernizing our policy book to bring it online and organizing it in a way that the MASC organizes their kind of handbook manual for their policy books. We'll be modernizing that soon and having bi-weekly meetings. Hopefully, we'll have a lot of policy agenda items to be approving very soon.
Great, thank you. Questions, comments?
One comment.
Yes.
Wow, okay, that was awesome. That's huge. That policy book weighs more than like Spencer Cat, my therapy cat. That's a heavy, heavy thing, so thank you for taking that on. Really appreciate it.
Lots of housekeeping work coming up.
Student support subcommittee.
Nothing new to report.
Any questions, concerns, comments, seeing none. School personnel committee. Nothing to report at this time. Executive committee, nothing as well. Student representatives, take it away.
Okay, so students will be receiving their quarter one progress reports on Friday, October 8th. The progress report is an important tool to inform the parents and the student of the steps needed to finish quarter one strong. The last day of the quarter is November 5th.
This Thursday, October 7th, at 6:00 PM is the first school improvement council for the year. Any parents or students that want to participate are asked to email Mr. Roach and it does count for service hours for students if they are interested.
At the high school, the NHS officers were just selected, so Bruna Biz is the president, Alexa Silverberg is the vice president, Chauncey Michael is the treasurer, and Sam Faulkner is the secretary.
Then we are having pool testing has been started up at the FHS and it happens every single Wednesday. You can opt in now and we are doing tool testing. It's usually first period and kids are able to see if there's any updates or results afterward. Then also, this Thursday too, there is another vaccination clinic that is happening, October 7th, so if you are interested, very much sign up for this. And they're trying to get it so that by around Thanksgiving, it could be at 80% right now or about 55% among students. It's around 60%, 12 to 15, and 50% around that like 16 to 19 for all students in Pittsburgh for the vaccination rates. So really hoping to get that number up because then possibly they'll be able to do things like cap rallies inside if we reach around that 80%.
And then the last thing that we have to touch upon is the mentoring program that we started through the current events program with Reinhold last year. We're starting it again this year and so I've been talking to Mr. Sparks and we've been in contact and we plan to have our first meeting either this week or next week to try to start up that program again. So that's all we have for today. Thank you, guys.
Good question.
Yes.
What's the time, what's the time for the vaccination clinic on the 7th?
It's 8:30 to 12:00 PM.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, okay. Okay, any other further questions, comments? Thank you. Thanks, guys. Approval, next agenda, I approve the minutes from the previous special school committee meeting. Make a motion to approve the minutes. Motion made.
Second.
And seconded to approve the meeting minutes from September 13th, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is unanimous, thank you. Executive session not at this time. Communications.
Sure. I just want to say thank you to the cemetery department and to, oh my gosh, so many people, the Pittsburgh Historical Society, the Cemetery Commission, for having an amazing, you know, collaboration with Stratton Players. We did letters from the front, "Fitzburg and the War of the Rebellion" last weekend. I thank members of our group, Pete and the mayor, for coming because these are the stories of kids who went to Pittsburgh schools, grew up, and fought in the Civil War. And I spoke with Michelle Marino today and I'm speaking with other folks. We're looking, Mr. Mayor, to do an additional Veterans Day event at the cemetery with the reenactors from the 15th Massachusetts Voluntary Infantry. So we'll be able to really properly give respect to our Civil War soldiers and former Pittsburgh public school students the weekend of Veterans Day and that will be at Forest Hill Cemetery. Just stay tuned for more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Yes, Mr. Stevens.
I want to thank Ms. Gregan for the wonderful job she did writing that play. I enjoyed it very thoroughly the other afternoon. But the other thing, I'd just like to mention a Friday night football game. What I would like to do though, it's not so much about the game, but thank FATV for the wonderful job that they do. I don't think, they've done such a good job for such a long time that I kind of take it for granted what a good job they do. And listening to the watch, I watched the football game the other night and it was when Pittsburgh had the ball, it was halfback carried the ball, quarterback threw a pass, you know. Our FATV are so professional, they name the players and the numbers of the other team and recognize them and I just want to thank FATV for the wonderful job they do.
Here, here. We agree, thank you. Next on the agenda, public comment. Has anyone notified us that they wish to make a public comment? None at this time, thank you. And moving forward, superintendent's report, Mr. Jokel.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight we have a presentation on our MCAS results for last year along with our school improvement plans with which we are required to provide an update to the school committee. We're attempting, we are attempting to follow a similar format to provide not only where we have been, but more importantly, what we're doing now and where we're going. Before we do that though, I just want to announce two points of good news. One, that we have a teacher, Ari Rivera, Rivera at Pittsburgh High School, who's a member of their instructional leadership team. She has been selected as a Massachusetts Exceptional Latino Education Award and that'll be presented this Thursday online in a Zoom call. And also later this month, we have, we have a STEM teacher over at Longchamp, Becky Colo, who is receiving the STEM Teacher of the Year, an award ceremony to be held down in Patriots Place in Foxborough later this month. So those are two quotes worthy of mentioning before we get started. Also, I just want to inform the community regarding the Friday night football game at Lincoln Sudbury. There is an investigation underway by the superintendent in Sudbury. Our school resource officer will be working with their school resource officer to find out what exactly happened and that investigation is ongoing. I've spoken with the Lincoln Sudbury superintendent along with our police chief and tried to coordinate what exactly happened and how we can keep all our families and students safe, whether they're in Pittsburgh or they're attending extracurricular events elsewhere. So getting back to the agenda, we're ready to get started. And I think this, I don't know, billboard was, it's not a billboard, what's the correct term for it here? Bulletin board. Was that Crocker Elementary School and I thought it really just captured the essence of where we are after not being together for the last year and a half and together is our favorite place to be. So with that as our starting point and just to provide some context to the community about the 2021 MCAS results. So number one, MCAS is just one data point that we are looking at and I'll talk about that a little bit more. But the, last year's testing was conducted during a pandemic and everyone watching the presentations tonight and listening to the discussion should understand that is the time period when the MCAS occurred. The Department of Ed is only looking at last year's results for diagnostic purposes. There is no accountability, weighting, or consequences associated with last year's results in Pittsburgh or any school district in the Commonwealth. The year before in 2020, there was no MCAS testing, so the most recent comparison of results for MCAS was 2019. So I have a couple slides from the Department of Ed, really just to go through the really across the board in terms of MCAS outcome decrease in Massachusetts by grade level and in English Language Arts and Math. And tonight's information in the school improvement presentations will be primarily focused on grades three and four at three of the schools presenting and Mr. Pierce has some more information as McKay is K through eight. But I think just looking here at the state performance, it would, I would just ask everyone to look at the three through eight total. For English Language Arts, there was a 6% decrease across the state and on a grade 10 English Language Arts, there was a 3% increase. Looking at statewide level data for mathematics.
Can you tell me what, obviously the first column is grade levels. What are the other columns? There's no, there's no.
You know what, that for some reason didn't transfer over, Jim, from, from the state's PowerPoint to this. So I'll get back to you on that when I bring that up.
All right, okay, thank you.
But those are state numbers.
These are state numbers. So as you can see, the, I'm gonna say the orange in the corner, these are in the lower left-hand corner, this is information from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We have our own data interspersed through, throughout this presentation. On a math level basis, in Massachusetts and in other states across the country, there was a much greater decrease in math. Three through eight total average was about 15% across the state and at the high school in grade 10, the decrease in MCAS results was about 7%. So now we're going to shift gears in our summary review of grade three through eight data and this is for ELA and math, just a summary of those grades. And we started to look at all students, our white subgroups, our economically disadvantaged and our Hispanic Latino and our students with disabilities. These are the groups that are the largest groups in Pittsburgh and from a school improvement perspective, these are the groups of students, in addition to really all our students, who we want to help grow and achieve as we return now to full in-person learning and implement some new, implement our new reading curriculum, especially at the elementary grade level, along with some of the work that we're doing with OKUS schools and others. So in summary, this table and whether you're a table person or a chart person compares the 19, the 2019 and 2021 English Language Arts and Math and Science MCAS results. And when I look, look at the data and comparing it really over to the delta, and I actually dropped the E when I, when I put that in, I probably should have kept it in there, but D L T A is delta or difference from year over year for English Language Arts in all our subgroups for math and the science data. So as you can see, from an English Language Arts perspective, the difference between 19 to 21 for all our students was about an eight, eight-point decrease and this is for students who are meeting or exceeding the criteria on the MCAS results. And for math, there was a 15-point decrease, which is similar to the state-level data. And then by various groupings of students and some students can be in multiple categories here, but these, these just happen to be the five groupings that I selected here. There are many more groupings that we are analyzing as we're still digesting the data. Next, really just doing the same analysis at the grade 10 level, looking at, you know, what was the change in, as mentioned, at the state-level data, looking at the various subgroups. Most of our subgroups were similar to, the ELA results were similar to statewide results and our math results also were similar. But again, we're looking at the differences between all and some of the subgroups here, why some groups didn't fare as well last year as other groups and how we can get them in all of the subgroups to perform better. So taking the data presented in the last two slides and putting it into really a summary format here, looking at the state decrease for grades three through eight was about 6% for meeting and exceeding and for Pittsburgh, it was 8%. So about a 2% variance where we were 2% below the state average. For math, for grades three through eight, we were consistent with the results on the state level. On grade level, on grade 10 for English Language Arts, again, there was a three-point increase overall. On the state level, for Pittsburgh, we had a one-point increase, so there was a variance of two. And for math, at the state level, it was a 7% decrease and in our district, it was 14, so it was a 7% negative variance there. One of the things that we wanted to do is try to look back a little further bit, further in time to try to see what trends we're looking at longitudinally, recognizing that there are no results for 2020, which is grade out here in the 2020 column, and trying to follow a cohort of students through following grades. So if we just started off with grade three, that's highlighted here in yellow, you can see that from the English Language Arts perspective, 35% of the grade three students in 2017 were at meet or exceed as a percent. The following year, those third graders who had progressed to fourth grade were at 32% and then the following year at 30%. So you can see the different progression and I tried to color code them to fall, to differentiate the grade levels as they progress, as they went, grew up and advanced a grade. So as you can see, just looking at the 2019 data compared to prior years, for grade three was the highest over the last three years excluding 2021, which again, was conducted during a pandemic. So again, as we're looking at where we're at now, where we want to be and looking at where we were, 2019 was the strongest year from 2017 to 2019 for grade three, grade four. Grade five was in just a little bit off there, 2018 high from 32 to 30. Grade six was at a three-year high back in 2019. Grade seven was, was flat for English Language Arts at 25% and coincidentally, they were looking at 2021 on a three through eight, or that grade level, I should say, was at, stayed the same. So that grade level of seventh grade has been the same for the last three MCAS tests. Grade eight, 35%, again, up from 2018 in the, you know, 27, 18 range. Again, we don't know how they would have done because they would have progressed on here. Looking at math, again, looking across grade levels, grade three, 2019 was 42%, which was the best from 20, best results from 2017 to 2019. At 35 for 2019 was the high, equal the high of 2017. Excuse me, grade five, the three-year, 2017, 2019 was about 18%. Grade six was at an all-time or at least a three-year high back in 2019 at 30. Grade seven, 23%, three-year high. And grade eight was down at 23, which was below the three-year high in this time span of 32 back in 2017. So as I mentioned at the outset, I'm asking the school committee, our staff, the community to really focus more time on what, where we were as a district in prior years, not to spend a whole lot of time looking at last year, although last year is one of the tools that we're using as we move forward and we're going to talk about what some other tools we're using to assess our students as well. So we continue to unpack the data and we're working to set goals across the district and at our schools, given some of the data that I've presented, but also some of the data that you'll be hearing from the principals with us tonight. There is multiple assessment criteria and I think the first assessment criteria that's the most important is the student work that we see every day. Again, and I think that's important to say that we see every day and that we're in person for every day. That is most valuable to our teachers and to our school leaders who are with us here. Attendance, you'll hear our principals talk about attendance. IRID is a tool that we have used to track growth and, you know, how our students are performing in terms of are they at grade level or are they below grade level? And we had previously shared last year's beginning of the year assessment and the end of year and very shortly, we're going to have an update on our beginning of the school year assessment for this year using that tool. And lastly, what we're talking a little bit about here tonight is the MCAS data, which is a state standardized test. Consistent with the strategic plan that we're planning to finalize later this month, really coincides with the goal that all our students can grow and achieve and regardless of the grouping of students that we're highlighting or mentioning tonight, it includes, really, this goal applies to everyone. And lastly, you know, one of the things that has been received very positively by our elementary staff in the little over a month that we've been in school is the new English Language Arts curriculum that the school committee approved last spring. I've heard comments that it is a game changer for our, for our staff and students for this year, so thank you. At this point, I'm just going to ask John Thompson to just go over the redesigned Parent Guardian report that'll soon be going out to our parents shortly, so.
Thank you Superintendent Jokel. So like Bob said, because of the pandemic last year, the state has redesigned the Parent Guardian Report. So one of the things that you'll notice is there's different information regarding graphics and messages in the report. One of the things that parents will notice that usually in the report, it gives you a range of where your child would score in the certain MCAS tests and because of the pandemic, pandemic, they actually made the range students would score in a little bit larger. So they predict that if a student was to take the test again, that's the range they would fall in. So that's one of the notices that they'll see in the report, that there's a larger range. And then in addition, especially for the elementary schools, usually in grade four, there is growth and because there is, we did not take a test, MCAS test in 2020, parents in grade four will not see any growth data. So those are some changes. We will get, we will have growth data from grades five and up this year. So overall, one of the big changes too, is that you'll notice that there was only one subtest this year. Usually there is two or three days of MCAS testing, but this year there was only one day for math and one day for ELA. And the number of items were very, were pretty much cut in half, so there was only one day that students tested this year. And again, remember, in the elementary schools and middle schools, students who were at home had the option of testing at home. Students who were in school, tested in school. So the environment was very different. So when you do look at these reports, please make sure you keep that in mind. And then finally, the district central office received the reports this past Friday. My team at central office this week will be sorting the reports and they will be distributed to schools sometime next week and be sent home in child's backpacks. So the parents' reports should go home in about two weeks. Once parents receive those reports, please take a look at the reports. If you have any questions, please contact your child's teacher or your child's principal. In addition, I can be contacted if there's any questions to regard on the reports. So again, there will be some changes in the reporting, Parent Guarding reports this year. Thank you.
So, so having said that, as our introduction or preamble, the first school on the, on the agenda tonight is South Street Elementary School and representing South Street is the...
Bob, I just have one, Jonathan, regarding the, the MCAS, Desi and their infinite wisdom, is there any direction from them as to how they're going to approach districts that are less than stellar, you might say?
So the message is this is for reporting, reporting, why can't I think of names?
This is for diagnostic.
Diagnostic reporting only. So we are just using this piece as one snapshot of the student. Okay, they want us to take that, that data point for MCAS and compare it to what we know about students, the assessments that teachers are giving to students and our district assessments. So it's one data point. We all know that we are in a pandemic, students weren't in school for almost 18 months. So you will see tonight, and I will preface this report, or the report tonight, that the scores have decreased. Okay, the scores have decreased, especially at the schools that were, you know, pretty much meeting or exceeding, had many students meeting or exceeding in 2019. A lot of schools decreased. So please take these reports with a grain of salt. It's one data point. And please remember that we were in a pandemic.
And I guess I would also add, whether it's Pittsburgh or any abutting district, the decrease that we shared happened across the state. Again, are there districts and subgroups where the impacted students, where the pandemic impacted student learning more? Absolutely. That's, that's a known, known here. So as, as we've had conversations with our principal, we're working on the present and planning for the future here. So to continue just my introduction, with us tonight is Sue Tingas interim principal of South Street Elementary, so welcome, Sue.
Hi, thank you. Yes, so as Mr. Thompson and Mr. Jokel were saying, the data definitely looks looming, but we are looking forward. We have a plan in place and we are very excited, the staff, my staff at South Street, despite what this looks like, is very energized and very much, they're very excited to have students back in front of us in person for in-person learning and they see this, we looked at it briefly and we're moving on to teach the students that are in front of us this year and make sure that they get the education and make the progress that they need to make going forward. So if you look at this, I included 2018 as well, just because I wanted everyone to see that South Street was on an upward trajectory at this point. 2019, our scores were, were very well as, again, and then 2021, we took a bit of a hit. It was definitely the dip, whether it was due to students absenteeism, people having to quarantine, people sick, like there were all those factors that go into why students didn't make the progress that we were hoping. Again, I have shared this with my staff so that they have seen it. So the math took the biggest hit, if you want to move to, yeah. So if you see that again, like we had people meeting, this is just people, the students that were in meeting and exceeding percentages. So if you look at all students, we were at 40% was meeting and exceeding in math in 2019 and then we dropped down to 6%. And it is something that, that we keep in the back of our minds at all times, but we have a plan, set with my math coach and my ELA coach, sat with teachers and we're looking forward to seeing the changes. we're looking forward to seeing the changes that will be made for our students. So these scores will look vastly different next year.
Excuse me, may I ask a question? Is that included in this great big packet, or is this something new? I mean, do we have a copy of that?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear.
We can't understand.
Do we have a copy of that slide in our packets today?
We'll share this. No, it's not, you do not have a copy of this PowerPoint. We'll share this after tonight's meeting with you.
All right, okay. This is not the school improvement plan.
This is the school improvement plan.
This is?
Yeah, so.
I thought it was a continuation of MCAS, okay.
Yeah, so this is the MCAS reports, and now the school improvement plan is the next piece that you'll, Sue will get into.
We can get into that now if you want. Yep. I don't want to last too long on this. So we have three major goals at South Street, and this was the first one, to ensure a healthy school climate and culture to recognize the social, emotional needs of our students. We had teachers that went to the Yale Ruler Training a few years ago. They've brought it back. They're teaching our teachers how to teach students to recognize their emotions, to manage them, to make sure that they're in the right place to learn. So here we have what the teachers will become proficient using it. And then the last one is that building leadership that we'll oversee and we'll make sure that we support students and staff through the ruler priority. And it'll be a priority, especially this, this year. A lot of our students came back with a lot of different issues that they needed addressed before they can start learning. So this is all part of the process of showing them how to move forward. And then goal number two, so this is our biggest one. This is what we feel is going to really help move our kids forward. This is all about using a collaborative approach inquiry process through all our data meetings to close the achievement gap. This is what we're looking at, multi-tiered system of supports. So teachers are responsible for tracking explicit interventions through individual plans. So all students, we just sat down and did our ELA data meetings, and we went through this. So every single student has an individual plan on how to meet their goal in ELA. And in two weeks, we're going, or a week and a half, we're going to be doing the math the same way. So students will have an individual plan for math and ELA. The teachers are responsible for creating the small groups. Everything is very targeted, very explicit, very direct. That's what all of our staff meetings and, and PDs have been about, that the students have no time left to waste, that we're moving forward. We need to make every single second that they're in front of us count. And teachers have really taken a hold of this, and they're very excited about it. They're going, we also now implementing, we've always had like the ELA screeners, like through Dibbles, the Phonics. Our math coach this year has implemented a math screener, so it's all around number sense. So these students will take that math screener three times a year, and the teachers will be able to track, are they really increasing? We need those basic skills to be mastered by all students. I think that's a big improvement from what we've done in the past. We haven't had that math screener, so we're excited. They just took it. We have baseline data. We're already looking forward to January because we know we're going to see big improvements. But as, oh, and slide number, yeah. I almost jumped ahead, sorry. So students will be progress monitored every two to four weeks, depending on their needs. So as I say, there's a math screener, and we have other benchmarks through I Ready and, and end of unit tests. Teachers are going to be progress monitoring any students who have the need for that. So if they're on grade level and they're moving ahead, they'll have regular progressing, progress monitoring through the screeners and through I Ready. But if there are children who have any needs, who are missing certain skills in their skillset, then they're going to be progress monitored a lot sooner. They're going to have small, very, very small directed group work. So it might get presented as a whole group to the, to the students, but then when they go to work individually or in a small group with teachers, it'll be targeted for the skills that they need help in. So, and that'll be supported through the individualized student plans. And then we're building, the building leadership is going to be supporting the student-centered coaching cycles and supporting the co-teaching model. So right now, we have three teachers together as a, as a little co-teaching group. So you might have two gen ed teachers and an EL teacher working together. And those highest EL students will be in those rooms, so that EL teacher is planning directly with the, the two gen ed teachers that are servicing those students. Same thing with special ed teachers and the gen ed teachers, they're all working together. They're planning together. I've built in extra time into the schedule for those groups to get together, to plan. They have an extra, about an extra forty minutes a week of planning time that we've covered, so that they can continue on and, and plan together. And that will hopefully lead to student success. And then the last goal that we have is about diversity and sensitive and responsive to different cultures. We realize that we need to develop lesson plans and academics that celebrate all of cultures. The teachers are implementing project-based learning activities through the social studies standards. We ask for them to do that in our, in our school improvement plan three times a year. So one each quarter, so that they can celebrate those differences. And the building leadership, again, we will support the teachers in this collaborative work to ensure that all the topics are being covered. And that is the end of my presentation.
Yeah.
Any questions or?
I have a.
Yes.
So I have a couple of questions. You mentioned that, first thanks for your presentation. It was a good overview, and it's great to see all this other information here too. You mentioned that you, all the teachers and teams met, and every child has a plan.
Yes.
So how does that work in like reality of like, that teachers now come in every day and they're teaching? And how often do you revisit this individual plan for each child? And I guess I'm just curious like how that works. And my second question is, and I, it's probably not, I know it's not the focus, but like I am struck by how few kids in the district exceed expectations. And I, you know, you know that there are a lot of kids who probably are ready to be pushed beyond meeting. And what is our plan? Like I do hear that we need, I mean, we've got kids behind grade level, right? And that's our, it's kind of like triage, right? We got to get in there and we got to get those kids up. But I guess I'm just wondering, is there a plan for those other kids?
Okay, to, to answer the first question about the individualized plans, so those are going to be revisited as often as the students' needs are. So some of them will be progress monitored every two weeks. So teaches, they're the ones that are right on the front line of the teachers' minds. These are the ones that we have to make sure that they're on target to meet grade level If some of them might need four weeks, some of them might need just regular benchmark looking at every eight weeks. We're really trying to tailor it to the students' needs and put in the appropriate staffing supports, whether they need Title I or maybe Title I in math, Title I in ELA, maybe they need a side tutor. We have some paras that can go into rooms and take them aside and give them even a little bit more than what some of the other students are. So we're trying to meet individual student needs to get everybody caught up. That's our first plan.
Okay.
The second one about students more should be exceeding, I totally agree with you. We need to remember that MCAS is just one test.
Oh, yeah.
So if we look at everything all the way across the board, we might look at MCAS scores and be like, man, they really do so much better than what they performed on this one task.
Yeah.
You know, we don't know what, how they were that one day, or maybe they have test anxiety. But yet, they're showing us throughout the day and throughout their years at school that they can do this work. So it's, it's, I guess it's building capacity to take a high stakes test. But I think we definitely have more students who can meet and exceed in front of us. The kids, they just need the right supports, and that's what we're looking to give them.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Sue?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Share your time.
Our next principal coming up is Casey Bolak, principal of Crocker Elementary. Good evening, Casey.
Good evening Assistant Superintendent. Everybody, Casey Bolak here, principal of Crocker Elementary School. First, like to just thank my admin team, my staff, teachers, paras, food service, custodial, clerical, for the amazing work that they were able to do last year and have already done this year. You know, the, the kids are back and we're excited about it, so. This is, for us at Crocker, this is the district goal, but this is something we always come back to because we really do feel like we're, we're a part of the district. And it's like, this is, this is our driver, and the goal, the theory of action, is something that we really do follow and believe in. Part of our growth this year was as a leadership team, we all made these commitments on the right-hand side that we're really trying to follow, to be growth-focused, to be vulnerable, trustworthy, adaptable, and collaborative. These are things that we're going to need to do this year in order to make this work a reality. The theory of action is something that's really near and dear to, to my heart, kind of speaks to my moral imperative, really about collaboration and growth and achievement, as long as we can all partner together. And we, we really need to gain access to those social and emotional supports and remove these barriers so our students can get to the highest level. So, so Crocker's vision goes right along with that, and I wanted to make sure that we, we had the opportunity to talk about it. This is something that was developed with Lynch Leadership Academy through this summer and some of the work that I did with them near the end of the year. This is something that I really truly believe in. I talked about it some last year, if you remember, and it's really about relational trust. Last year was tough on our schools and our, our families and our staff, and some of that relational trust was, was broken and was broken down. So we need to make sure, first and foremost, that we're implementing social and emotional learning as well as our academic learning. And it's built around the routines and norms on a foundation of relational trust. So as you can imagine, the routines and norms have been something that we've been really having a focus on since the beginning of the school year. Getting our students back to the structures and the routine of everyday school is something that is really going to help them move faster. So at elementary level and really at Crocker, we talk a lot about moving slow so we can get going fast. And we've been doing a lot of that, and we're on our way. And then involving stakeholders, all stakeholders, right? Students, staff, families, and really having a strength-based school as we continue to remove those barriers, just as the district said. And we can only do this by improving our student connectedness, which is a huge part for us. We have to get our, our kids to feel connected to school again, all day, every day, making sure those relationships with our students and staff are solid, and our family and community engagement. We need, we need to do that. It's, it's something that we believe in deeply. So I've, I've been before you for a few years now presenting MCAS scores, and you know, I'm not liking seeing red up here for Crocker. But this is our reality, okay? What you're seeing here is our percentage of exceeding and meeting students. Where we were in 2019 and where we are in 2021 for our third and fourth graders in ELA and in math. You know, we, we did have a solid third grade year. Our third grade team was excellent and is excellent, but according to the data, you know, we, we were able to be better than the state and have a higher percentage in both ELA and math. So that is something that I wanted to make sure we celebrated today. But, you know, in comparison to 2019 and 2021, we went down at every level. But in comparison to the state, you know, we were in third grade better. So this is, so for, I just have it as a three through eight, but this is really just for our third and fourth grade. And I talked about our scaled scores. So these are the achievement levels where we really talk a lot about that 500 mark has been our, our, our marker, where we want to get to for an achievement level. And so you can see up on the top for ELA, back in 2019, all our students said we had an achievement level of 504.1. And we, we had a, a twelve-point drop from 2019 to 2021. It's a little bit under the state's overall average. And then I just, for reference, I also have the district. Okay? And so then your, your, your subgroups are below that are our English learners, our students with disabilities, and Hispanic Latino subgroups are some of the groups that I was focusing on, and that'll be some of our school improvement goal, as well as I'll talk about. And so below that, you'll see math and the differences between 2019 and 2021. And then compared to the state, and then as well as the district. So some things, you know, to, to celebrate still at Crocker, but there's a pretty sharp, sharp decline from 2019 to 2021. I wanted to make sure that I got some celebrations in and that it's not all doom and gloom, okay? Because we had, we worked really hard last year, and we were, overall, we had an achievement score just under that 500 barrier for our third grade ELA. We were real close. And like you saw, there were many metrics still at or better than the state and district for our MCAS results. And part of that vision for the district as well as Crocker, I really wanted to celebrate our teachers and our staff's way that their ability to build connections with our families last year in order to continue the teaching and learning through the pandemic was, was amazing. And our ILT, we started the year before, was a saving grace, I could say that personally, but it was a strong, strong team. And we were, had valuable input on decisions that were best for students throughout the year, not what was easy, but what was best. Our focus areas remained similar with our, our English learners and our former, our students with disabilities. And when I say dual identified students, I say, you know, the students that fall into both of those categories above. And the addition really is the social and emotional learning, the focus. You know, there's, there's been a lot of mental health needs that have come into the building, and we have a major focus and a belief at Crocker that, that social and emotional curriculum is as important as the academic curriculum, and if we can get our students ready to learn, they will be able to, so. I've broken down my, the, the three goals in the school improvement plan, really just to focus on our, these two major subgroups and how we're going to do it. It has a lot to do with a lot of the things that Sue was talking about right before me. Our co-teaching model needs a little bit of revamping and scheduling and trying to figure out where we have higher percentages of ESL students or students with disability, and how we can best service them. Are there other, out of the box, we'll say, thinking ways that we can get these kids more at bats, to use a Red Sox baseball term, as we can get ready for that and move on from football? And how do we do that before school, after school, during school? And how do we, we try to find different ways and different entry points for our students? You know, the, the goal. You know, the goals are lofty, but they're really just getting back to 2019-type levels, which we know our students can achieve. You know, we believe that they can, we know that they can, and that's the goal. So, you know, really, the acceleration plan put out by the state also emphasizes really just a co-teaching model and getting our students access and the availability to grade-level curriculum as much as possible, and we believe in that immensely. So that's a real driver for us as we move forward, so. I think that's it.
Questions for Casey?
I guess, I guess I need help understanding the co-teaching model. Like, as I understood it, there was the move in the district to co-teach with a special education teacher and a classroom teacher, and my, I mean, I guess this is going back to the good old days of 2019 when we talked about being a school district, not a district of schools. And so I'm curious if there's a consistency in that model, and I know you're saying here it is with ESL. So could you, maybe you, Casey, but, you know, maybe Sue or maybe members of the administration, what is the, what is the model that we want in every school?
I can say the model at Crocker is, for ESL and our students with disability, we do as much co-teaching as possible. We have our ESL staff push in to allow those students to have access to, especially at the elementary level, a vocab-rich environment and learning environment, and so they can gain access to that grade-level curriculum with the added supports and scaffolds that they may need. And really, whether it's ESL or students with disabilities, it's all along the same lines of a co-teaching model.
And how does that work in practicality? So is it a scheduled, like, on Mondays, this?
It's a scheduling nightmare. But, you know, sometimes it's not as practical as we need it to be, right? And we're still looking for an ESL teacher, if anybody knows one, I'll do a shameless plug there, but we schedule it tightly. And so we have five special ed teachers, four ESL teachers at the moment, and we look at when there's reading. We kind of have pockets, our higher concentrations in certain classrooms of students with disability and our English language learners, and then we deploy the support staff, whether it's right after a whole group lesson, and then they start doing a workshop-type model even with math or for our new literacy curriculum, and how they're doing that and how we can gain access to it. So it's a lot of tweaking, it's a lot of grouping and regrouping, it's a lot of schedule work, it's just starting now to kind of come in to fruition as we figure out who's here, who isn't, and how we're doing it, and what levels everybody's at. But it's doable, it's tough, but it's practical in the end.
Gene, can I add something to Casey's answer? So, at a district level, one of the things when we, kind of, the administration changed at central office in 2019, we had to step back and take a look at our staff, because what we noticed, five to seven years ago, we did a really big kick, push for co-teaching throughout the district. We noticed in the last five to seven years, we lost teachers to retirements to other districts. So the same staff that we trained five to seven years ago, we're no longer in the district, Gene. So this year, we kind of had to hit the reset button, and we trained over, I think, what, seventy-five teachers, K to twelve, this school, this summer, in co-teaching. We're using a consultant named Donna Simone. Her company's coming in to do all the training district-wide throughout the year, and she's also coming in to do walkthroughs in the schools to give actual feedback to the teaching teams who are doing co-teaching. In addition, because we're focusing on co-teaching with special education and EL students, we have our retired teacher named Becky Mackey, who was our one-year EL director. She's actually back in the district, part-time, helping the work on a special education lens. So when these consultants are not in the district, the work is continuing with the help from people in the district, in conjunction with the principals. In addition to that, we also have Deb Hooper, who is a teacher on special assignment for EL, English language learners. She's also then going into the classroom like Becky and giving feedback to the EL teams that are doing co-teaching through the district. So one of the things we wanted to make sure happened was that support happened all the time, not just when the consultant was in the district. So that's kind of the, you know, high-level look at what's happening throughout the district for co-teaching, the co-teaching initiative.
Yeah, so it's a district initiative too, and I think the exciting part is that the PD is with teams, so it'll be teams of teachers, not just the special ed teacher trying to figure out how to be a co-teacher. It's the special ed teacher working with that general ed teacher, planning together and going through the same professional development at the same time. It's exciting.
Thanks, that's helpful.
Next we'll bring up Justin Sparks.
Yeah.
Justin is our interim principal over at Rhinegold Elementary. Justin previously was the assistant principal at Rhinegold, so while he may be new to the role, he's not new to the school, and I think he gets the presentation with most pictures award.
Sucker for a good picture.
I guess that's, you know, asking others to step up their game with the use of pictures too, so that's next time.
I just want to say you don't get extra credit for including members of the school committee in one of your pictures.
That's what I was going for. Jimmy, you know me too well.
If you're going to include one, you should include us all, I'm just saying.
I had another one with Mr. Stevens over there, but it got cut last minute, you know, so.
Mr. Stevens is Mr. Agar.
Just dogs here.
Thanks. They say when you're interviewing, you should go first or last, so I'm here in the middle with, following Mr. Bolak, so tough to go after that. But as the superintendent said, I'm Justin Sparks. I think I've met most of you over the years in some fashion. You know, I was the assistant principal at Rhinegold for two years prior to assuming this role, just couldn't be happier. I'm thrilled to serve the kids of Rhinegold and the students from the city of Pittsburgh, and really, I'm honored, so. You know, my presentation's going to be similar to the others, some differences, but feel free to stop me as we proceed if you have any questions or comments or feedback. And you have the entire presentation, you have the entire plan, so if you have any questions after the meeting and you want to reach out, feel free. And thank you, by the way, for your commitment and dedication, and it's a thankless job and long nights, but we all appreciate it at the school level. So again, I'm just going to highlight some key points from our school improvement plan. This really starts at the district level, and we take Bob and John and the cabinet's district improvement plan, kind of funnel it down and adapt it to the needs of our kids over at Rhinegold. And we do this really collaboratively, you know, taking into account student voice, of course, taking into account the teachers. This is formed in part with the leadership team. Those members all represent different facets from across the school, and the parent feedback as well. So, not to beat a dead horse here, looking at some data from 2021. Obviously, 2020, we didn't have a, was not an MCAS year, and then three years prior, I think, gives us a real good understanding of where we've been. So if we're looking up here at 2021, you know, and just to preface, I think John may have mentioned this earlier, but the MCAS was a real strong assessment, is again, just one indicator of student performance, right, along with our common assessment data, our IREDA scores, our module assessments, our student work samples, and those types of things, you know. Those all taken in, you know, in conjunction, give us a good picture and good understanding of the whole child and what each individual child needs. So if you look here, our third grade and fourth grade ELA scores were fairly comparable to years past, so not a huge change there. What was very noticeable to me and alarming was those math scores. You see, here we have ten, just about ten percent of our third and fourth grade students at the meeting or exceeding level. So cause for concern, so we brought this back to the ILT and leadership team at the school, and just kind of put it on the table and said, well, you know, what do we think happened here? And really, I think math is something that's, you know, the teachers did a heck of a job last year with a tough go through remote learning, you know? I think we learned a lot of things through the pandemic, but I think we learned that remote learning is challenging, especially at the younger levels. You know, kindergartners and first graders, you know, to get them to sit still and stare at a screen for six-plus hours is a tall order. Math especially is something where you really need to be in front of the teacher in small groups, you know, in differentiated groups based on your individual needs, and really working with manipulatives and engaging in discourse with peers, you know, and having your teacher right there to scaffold every step of the way. And I think what you're looking at here is, are the results of those things not happening. You know, again, they're no fault of the teachers, they did an awesome job through this, but, you know, there's work to be done for sure. Going back to the three years prior, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen here, again, looking at meeting and exceeding expectations. You see, I've highlighted here our three, four strongest years, third grade math ELA, fourth grade math in ELA. Looking at 2019 as being one of our strongest or the strongest year overall, so when crafting the school improvement plan, 2021 gives us some data, but really, we're looking at the strongest years of all to base our school improvement plan on going forward. And you see, 2019, you know, we've had a lot of conversations about why these scores were markedly higher. When you go from twenty-nine percent to fifty-six percent in ELA over the course of a year, and twenty-two to forty-four, that's pretty impressive. And, you know, I can probably attribute it to a number of things. Strong programming brought in, you know, there was some stability brought in by, you know, Dr. Renda, he brought over a lot of Casey and Crocker's success in terms of bringing student support and structures over to Rhinegold, which we, you know, continue to use now, so. You know, a lot of things at play there, but anyway, those are the numbers I used in determining where we're going to go next with our plan. So, breaking it down a little bit further here, and looking at these four subgroups that superintendent mentioned earlier, you know, our ESL population, those students make up just about twenty-five percent of our school, just for context. Our economically disadvantaged, sixty-five percent of our population at Rhinegold. Our special ed population, twenty-three percent, and our Latinx make up fifty-three percent. So these are our kids, you know, and their success is our success. So you see here over the years, again, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, certainly some positives there, which I've highlighted in yellow, and some negatives, which I've also highlighted in yellow. And you can see the color coding there, and the arrows showing progression from year to year. So for instance, if you see eighteen, I'm not going to go over every point here now, but if you have any questions after, if you look at eighteen to nineteen, you know, some strong improvements, especially in terms of our ESL population. In turn, 2019 and 2021, you see our Latinx and economically disadvantaged students actually outperformed a lot of their peers. But I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the, you know, the tough spots here too, and, you know, we're talking about our EL population and special ed population, none of them, none of them at meeting or exceeding, you know, that's a tough pill to swallow, and there's work to be done. And as we go back to 2017, you see those zeros up there again, and that kills me. That's something we're looking at and something we're planning around moving forward. This conversation came up at my leadership team meeting the other day, you know, well, thirty-three percent, you know, in a pandemic, meeting or exceeding reading scores is, well, not bad, but that means one out of three kids is leaving third grade a proficient reader, one out of three. So, I think that sat with me for a while, and that's something that, you know, is sitting with my staff, and so there's urgency there around that. Again, if we look at our attendance trends, and one of my school goals is around belonging, connectedness to school, and kind of difficult to, it's not like MCAS, difficult to measure sometimes, but I think if you look at attendance data, we've also got some surveys on belonging and family and student and staff belonging that we're going to be looking at. But if kids are at school, if they're waking up every morning and saying, "Mom, Dad, I got, you know, I gotta, take me to school, I gotta get there for the art lesson or for the paraprofessional or, you know, for the after-school basketball program," or whatever it may be, that's going to get them there, that's going to boost our attendance score. So the more belong they feel to school, the better the attendance rates is the way I see it. So we see here again, 2019 was this magic year at Rhinegold, and, you know, pretty consistent across with the attendance. The first number you're looking at is the attendance rate, which is calculated by, I'm sure you know, the student's membership divided by the qualifying days, which is usually a hundred eighty, last year was a little different. And then the second number is the chronic absentee rate, which, again, is a tough one, and that's when a child misses ten percent or more of the school year, which in a normal year is a hundred eighty days, so that's eighteen absences over the course of a year, which is a lot, which is way too many. So in our best year, we had, our attendance rate was ninety-four point one percent, while our chronic absentee rate was eighteen point nine percent. We were hoping, and I think we were on track, to do a lot better last year, and then, you know, we were hit with the pandemic, so we're looking to build on that. We want to see that attendance rate go up and that chronic absenteeism rate go down. So even still, when you're talking about upwards of twenty percent of the population missing eighteen-plus days of school, that's way too many. So we've got some structures and systems in place to work with families, to knock down barriers and support kids and make sure they feel belonged and want to go to school each and every day. So that said, these are our three Rhinegold school improvement goals. One focused on academic excellence in literacy and math. So by June 2022, Rhinegold Elementary School will increase literacy and math MCAS scores by twenty-five percent beyond the greatest of the previous three pre-pandemic years. And I had to add this in because I feel like, you know, when we're talking about SMART goals or SMARTY goals, or whatever we call them, we want to make them measurable, what gets measured gets done, but also attainable and realistic. But I have to add in there that the ultimate goal is really making sure all of our kids are proficient readers and mathematicians. So there's that. The second one is student and family belonging, connectedness, and engagement. By June 2022, Rhinegold Elementary School will increase student belonging and school connectedness as measured by attendance data, as I mentioned before, student and family surveys in grades two through four, and participation in open houses, conferences, school-wide events throughout the year. We've already had a few different events. Our kindergarten orientation saw eighty-plus percent participation, which was, which I thought was strong. We have a summer ice cream social, which always brings in hundreds of kids. A lot of you were able to be there, which we all appreciate. And, you know, we just had a, well, actually, it wasn't we, it was more Louisa Fernandez hosted a supper market event at our school and brought in close to forty-plus families, which was great, kids and their families, they got, you've probably heard about it, got a little bag of money, they got to go shopping, food services, put out all sorts of stuff, and they played math games, they saw the high school kids, you know, Bob and John and Craig came by to say hello, and, you know, it was overall, it was a great family event. came by to say hello and, you know, it was overall, it was a great family event. And then the third, our third school improvement goal is like Casey's and Sue's focused really on, on social emotional learning. And it should, probably doesn't surprise any of you that kids coming back after the pandemic, you know, they, they were struggling socially and emotionally. And, you know, we want to make sure we're meeting them where they are right now. And so we've got this goal and a host of different supports to meet, to meet them where they are and really get them, get them what they need so that they can access our curriculum. Part of that is a tier one, and Casey and Sue both mentioned it before, the ruler program is designed to do just that. It's, I'm going to get this wrong, recognize, understand, label, express, and regulate. So it's done right in the general ed classroom by the, by the teacher, our guidance counselors, and we're leveraging our health special as well to do some small lessons on those, related to those things. We're also using a new screening tool called D E S A. And what that, what that is, is it's a quick, quick assessment and gives really useful data on each individual student as far as what, you know, what, what they're bringing as far as strengths and needs in terms of social emotional development. And you use that data then to connect them with the supports they need to succeed. It's kind of small. All right, so just, just a few of the action steps around, you know, related to those goals. The others had talked about student-centered coaching, you know, I don't know who told me, but somebody said, everybody deserves a coach. You know, it's in the, in other, in other realms, certainly in sports, everyone, everyone gets a coach. You know, finally, with John's support, every teacher's going to have one, and this is a shift in model, really, where it's not the coach necessarily coming in and saying, it's me, this is what you're going to do. It's, everybody's an expert. We all have something to offer and it's focused on meeting the kids and their needs and where they are. And speaking of everybody needing a coach, the coaches need a coach too. So that's really my charge this year, and that's a high leverage structure. As I've been told throughout the year, I, I can't do it all and, you know, and I have to build up the team and the capacity of the people around me and their experts. And my staff at Ryan Gold is, is, is pretty outstanding and they've got a lot to offer. So one of my, one of my personal goals this year is to continue to work with them and build their capacity, and that's the coaches too. So we have weekly meetings together, we plan out our, our common planning time, we plan out the activities, we look at the data, and we work with individual teachers on, on getting kids to where they need to be. The third bullet point there is we were, we are fortunate enough to be in year two of an early literacy grant, which gives us some high quality materials. It also gives us a consultant who's in our building once a week, working directly with teachers in teams as well as individually. Second, the next couple are focused on just making sure that our new literacy program, which again, teachers have been raving about, and it's, you know, no, no knock on the, on the previous literacy program, but it just didn't meet the needs of our, of our kids. This one truly does, and we're in the beginning phases right now of implementation, and it's a, it's a big program, but it's, it's going to go a long way in supporting their needs. And, you know, I'll say now, we'll see those literacy scores go up next year for sure with this strong program. Just making sure those minutes are built into the schedule and they're done with fidelity is, is our action steps there. All of our teams this year are working together to build a year-long archive learning, so all of our activities, P D, our I L T, our C P Ts, they're all connected, all of the learning that's happening with the adults is connected back to student learning. We are lucky enough to have, speaking of, of coaches, we have a lot of layers of support and professional development this year. I have my leadership team working with future management systems focused on, on building their capacity and their, their leadership skills, so focusing on, you know, their strengths and what they need to be, or what they can be working on to leverage those to increase student results throughout the school. And as mentioned, Carrie Purcell and Focus School, they've been working with, with Mark and McKay and the high school, and we're lucky enough to have her working with us this year. So we have a meeting set up with her this year, this week, and we're going to be picking her brain on, on how we can improve those, those results. Again, really digging deep into the acceleration roadmap, and as was just explained so nicely, co-teaching model for, for both ESL and, and special education. And just to kind of go back into that a little bit, there's a lot of different models for the, for the co-teaching, and there's not one right model, there's a lot of different models, and it kind of depends on the, the team, the ESL and, and general ed team, or the special ed and general ed team. But it starts with trust, and it starts with planning, they need to have the planning time. And from there, really, it's inclusion, all the, all the kids are, all the students are in the classroom, there's not a lot of pullout. So there's nobody, students aren't necessarily getting singled out, they're working together, they're flexible groups. So you might have an ESL teacher working with a group of general ed kids or vice versa, and, and they're both the experts in the room, so the kids go to both of them when they need something. So there's that. We have our attendance team working, looking at data on a weekly basis, tracking trends, and again, communicating with families to help knock down any barriers that may exist for them. We really, we're trying to be proactive with our, with our kids and make, you know, incentive programs for the kids to want to come to school. Last year, you know, when, when, when students came and achieved perfect attendance for a month, they got a little bracelet, they got a certificate and an award. But I think we all know that student, student attendance data and all hinges on feeling belonged and feeling connected to the school experience, being engaged in the classroom. So, but we're, we're looking at that data on a regular basis. And then just to go back again, a few more things that we're doing this year, leveraging student voice through our student advisory council. Just a quick shout out to our 21st Century Program, and that's one way, I think, Gene, you had talked about, you know, I think you were getting at differentiation and enrichment for those, for those kids that need a little bit more, and the 21st Century Program is one way that I think really attacks that, and it's all project-based, it's after-school two hours. We have Ryan Gold, we have STEM, we have Spanish class, we've got art, club, and drama. So these are some different ways that kids can feel a little bit more connected. We're starting this year, thanks to Craig and Tassi, an after-school sports program, a basketball program for 25 of our fourth graders. Looking forward to that. And then just expanding and enhancing the events we already offer to families. The, I talked about the ruler already. That's, that's all I have, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions or comments or feedback. He's the only one talking tonight.
I'm sorry, I keep having questions here, but so that, when I was looking at your data, like, that third grade team looks really strong. How, how consistent is the staffing this year? Like, is your third grade team intact from last year? Is it, has a lot of people retired or what's, what's happening with staffing?
It's interesting that you say that. We, we had, we had a retirement last year, Lee Cormier retired, and we, we're lucky enough to have Carolyn Schalafel come over from.
Longest Joe.
Longest Joe, longest Joe, thank you, to, to, to fill that in. But other than that, yeah, they've been pretty stable, to answer your question, for the past couple of years. And, and you know, it's, it's a nice mix of teachers that have, they're veteran teachers who have been around for a long time, and some newer teachers. I think we've got two, two, and two in their third or fourth year, and two have been, who have been around for quite a while, and one sort of in the middle.
Okay.
So the mix is good, the team collects, they're all working really, really well together, it's a dynamic team. Yeah, it's, it's.
I feel like Ryan Gold had a lot of changes to teams, and is that still happening there? Or is that, and what, what's the philosophy behind that?
There's been some transition, as I understand it, this is only my third year here, but there's been some transition as, as far as staffing. It's been pretty stable.
Okay.
In, in my tenure. You know, we've, we, we entertain some, some movements, you know, from, from time to time, but the teams have pretty much remained intact.
Okay.
With a couple of retirements here and there, but we're hoping to hang on to the, to the, to the great staff we have.
Yeah.
At this point, we're, we're in pretty good staffing shape, you know, aside from a couple of paraprofessionals that we could always use, but other than that, we're, we're looking pretty good.
Good. Thank you.
Great. I had a quick question. I, I saw the pictures from the parent night of the shopping, and it looked really wonderful. And I'm wondering, is Louisa able to do this or organize similar events at our other elementary schools? Are those in the works?
Yeah, I think, I think her intent is to do one at every school, and I don't want to speak for her, but.
That, that's great. I'd love to, I mean, I don't know if, you know, we'd be able to come visit when they're happening, but I'd, I'd love to have that.
Yeah, we're planning, they're public events, so.
Yeah.
We're planning one event every month at, at the schools, so.
Because the, you know, the, the parents have been so, I mean, if you put a score on the parents' mental health along with our students, I, I think everyone's kind of on the same level, but that, that event seemed very imaginative and very inclusive and very universal in appeal, and, and that was very winning, so glad, glad to see. Hopefully, see you soon, we have some pets that want to visit.
You're always welcome at Ryan Gold, Sally, you know. But no, just real, true collaboration, this, Louisa is amazing, she's a terrific asset to your district, to our district, and I don't need to tell you that, but really, when you have, you got the high school kids, you know, we had Rollstone Bank and Trust and a whole bunch of other local businesses who came and helped out. Food Services put out all of these, you know, all these different foods, set up their cafeteria line, the kids went through and they had to pay for, you know, with play money, of course, to pay for their, for their meal. If it weren't COVID times, we, we wanted to have them actually eat there as a family, but they took the bags to go this time, this time around. But overall, they had a good time, you know, like I said, we had 40-plus families there, and at the end of the night, there was a ton of food left over, so we went out to the baseball fields and invited the, the baseball players to come in with their family.
Is that sports program, is that in every school? Or is that just Ryan Gold?
He, Craig has something in the works at, at other schools too, I think. We were, I'm not sure at the, at the elementary level, I'm not sure, but he, yeah, this, this was kind of a pilot year, I, I guess.
Okay.
You know, we have, we've got two eager teachers that come before school, an hour, hour and a half at it, and they, and just shoot hoops, and they're like, oh, wouldn't it be great if, if we had some kids doing this in sort of like a little basketball league? So, all right, well, we'll, we can bring it up and see where it goes.
Okay.
And the response from the, from the kids was pretty positive, and then, of course, our athletic director was on board with it.
Great, thank you.
It would be fun if we had a school versus school sort of thing, and.
Yeah.
Like, croc her over and beat him up a little bit from time to time. There's no competition here with the.
Maybe a question for Bobby. We used to get, schools used to send out newsletters and we used to get them, but because of the pandemic that happened last year, schools are showing notices and newsletters that are going out to parents. A lot of the school committee used to get them, so we would know the activities, what were going on in the buildings. And now it seems to be kind of hit or miss if we get the information or not.
Yeah, we have, I mean, Ryan Gold's on the S M O R S platform, which they used to communicate as the district does as well, so we can have you added to the distribution list, I think that's pretty easy to do.
And a lot of newsletters are also posted on the social media pages, right? Other schools and websites, so.
But we can get those to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we do a, try to do a weekly, if not bimonthly newsletter, just school-related events, highlighting positives and celebrations, and then upcoming things, but send them out, like John said, to the families, but we can, we'll add you, we'll add you all.
Great. Could I just maybe expand on a comment made by Gene, you know, from a school district and a district of schools? A lot of the initiatives that Justin mentioned on his last slide are being implemented across the district, so whether we focus schools or working with, you know, future management systems to build leadership teams, and I think, you know, the, the challenge that we have, and we'll talk about it a little bit more, but, you know, in terms of trying to keep and retain staff, and, and yet we still have para shortages across the district, so we're working together to, from a central office perspective, to be that customer service center for the schools. But I think there's probably more consistency amongst the schools in terms of having the same approaches than I think there's ever been.
That's great. I haven't met you very often, but I, you know, my kids have gone through this system, and they were Ryan Gold kids, and now my youngest is a junior in high school. So it's, it always was a point for me that, like, if one child had an opportunity in this city, how, you know, how can we make sure every child had that opportunity in this city? So I'm glad to see that those initiatives are pretty universal.
And I think, you know, one thing that Justin said, but I think it's all, all our principals here tonight would say the same thing, regardless of what the scores or any assessment, the results that we're sharing, I think, you know, we're really being vulnerable and sharing that information, but also recognizing that a third of our students being at grade level for us as a third grade, Justin, is, is not good for our students, our families, or for their future livelihoods, for their, you know, career or college aspirations. So that's something that is a, is a high priority. And again, the, the acquisition of the new reading curriculum is, I think, a big step forward, along with, you know, the co-teaching that's happening across our district at all grade levels. So hopefully, a year from now, those subgroups that we're talking about tonight will be, the numbers will be, and it's more than numbers, because there are people behind the numbers, and we want to make sure that when people leave our schools for a career or college, that they're competitive and they can get good, you know, jobs and good careers. So, I mean, and, but third grade literacy is, is a key benchmark for, you know, future success, right? So we want to make sure that we, to use the baseball analogy that I think Casey brought up, we want to, we want to hit it out of the park early so that the, the swinging of the bat in terms of trying to like hit those home runs in later grades isn't as hard. So hopefully I didn't overuse the metaphor. Thank you, Mr. Sparks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I guess to back clean up here, because it's about the Red Sox and Yankees, it's Mr. Pierce. So welcome, Mark.
A 13-hour day.
We promise we won't make it 15 with you.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, I challenge you guys, I'll come out of retirement for coaching. So first of all, before I start, just want to, again, like Casey did, just kind of thank the staff, students, admin, cabinets, school committee. Last year was a tough year for everyone, and, you know, there's a lot of support that we gave each other, I think, through this times. And I know these, my principal friends here, you know, we spent a lot of time calling each other and coming problem solvers. And a lot of the solutions last year were not easy solutions, but they were the best we could do with the information that we had. And the information changed every day, as you know, or sometimes by the hour. So I, I feel like people did the best they could with the, with the information they had, and here we are today, and it's, you know, and it's still happening to some degree. So, so the first slide that I have here is just kind of the aroma of McKay and what McKay looks like. And I think that's important, we've done a lot of work with Darnissa the last year on the sense of belonging and welcoming, and I think it's important to understand, you know, who our students are, who our families are. And so with that being said, we've done a lot of work with this, this past year, and we started a multicultural art alliance team, which we started last summer. And so they've been doing a lot of work on this type of sense of welcoming and belonging. We have a, so for an event that's coming up, so on October 23rd, we are going to have our multicultural fair, where we're going to have music and tables from the community, and we have a few food trucks coming, so that's. So that's in the process of being put together right now. So it should be an exciting event. That's October 23rd. We've also had an information night last week for special education parents, special education students and their parents, just to make sure that they understand the IEP process and things like that. So that was another thing we put together. And then our open house, which was, as I was planning the open house, COVID was starting to ramp up, and I had to make some game time decisions that morning, you know, do you have it? And we decided to have it. We moved a lot of it outside. And it was, we set up a lot of tables outside, and we had about 300 people show up. It was a tremendous success. And we had a lot of community members there with tables, and it just worked out. And we had a beautiful night. It looked like it was going to rain at 3:00, and the sun came out. And so it turned out to be a nice night. So those are some of the things that we've done with the welcoming and belonging. Next slide is, we've been very fortunate, McKay, to be able to work with focused schools. And so I spent a lot of time in the last year working with Kerry Purcell. So she's been my coach and my IL teams coach. And so we've done, we've done a lot of work, or continued the work that we started with the SSOS team a few years ago, where we had work on academic discourse and depths of knowledge, Level 3, 4 type questioning. And that rolled into our work with focused schools. And so what we really try to do is, like the title says, be focused. And make sure we make, keep the main thing the main thing. In education, as you know, we get a lot of distractions or a lot of initiatives, and we get pulled away sometimes of the main thing. So what Kerry has really done for us is make sure we keep the main thing the main thing. So we have an instructional focus, which says, all McKay students will adopt a growth mindset, which will enable them to critically read and communicate their knowledge. And that student growth will be measured by the state interim and classroom-based assessments. So really, we found, after we looked at the data the last few years, is that we really had to focus on, like most schools, reading and writing, right? But we, but when you put it on paper, it's more likely to become a reality. So that's really been our focus the last two years. So we all read those words, but students really don't understand, like, well, what does that mean? Right? So we came up with a student-friendly instructional focus, which simply says, we believe, we read, we share, we grow. So my ILT team today, actually, has really been working hard to make sure that all staff, all students, and the community, which is the next step, to, that this is our motto as we go forward. So as when most schools during COVID were just trying to survive, I'm really proud of my ILT team, they were doing this work during COVID, virtually from their dining rooms. And it was, we've done a lot of great work in the last year. And just one other statement. So some other things we've done with that belief is we're creating T-shirts, we're creating, make sure that every classroom is, you know, using this motto. And again, sharing it with the community will be the next step. So next is our sustainable improvement goals. We have three of them. So the first one is 100% of McKay staff will have the opportunity to participate in professional learning opportunities that will provide them with the tools and resources they need to continue to build the capacity as leaders of learning. So my job as a principal is not only to lead, but to make sure that other staff members get the opportunity to lead and build their capacity. So like Justin said, you know, as principals, we can't do it ourself. So it's important to build the capacity of your leadership teams. And with focused schools, that's really been, you know, and Lynch Academy, that's been the focus of our ILT. When I took over at McKay, which is hard to believe, it's like my fourth school year, I haven't had a normal school year yet. I feel like, you know, I started late in the year, COVID hits, and it's been that way ever since. So I'm waiting for the day that I can have a normal year. If there's ever a normal year for a principal, I don't know. I don't know yet. So we're still working on it. But the one thing we did is we, to build capacity, is the teachers have to be the ones that facilitate the meetings. It can't always be the principal, can't always be the coaches, can't always be the assistant principals. Teachers have to be the voice. Teachers have to have this opportunity to lead their colleagues. And like all the schools, we all have tremendous teachers in our schools. And it's just giving them the opportunity. So one thing that we really focused was giving ILT members the opportunity to facilitate PLCs and work with their colleagues directly. So some of the other action items, so ILT will be leaders of learning and overseers of the implementation of the school improvement plan. Can't just be the principal, can't just be the admin team. It has to come from teachers, the staff, that they have to be the leaders in this. Next, ILT members and teachers will participate in learning walks and walkthroughs for, with the admin team. So that's a longer-term goal. We're hoping to get to that piece at the end of the year. Right now, I'm just trying to get into classrooms and get the admins into classrooms. And so as we start to do that, the eventually, we would like to get to ILT members in the classrooms. And then when it's working really well, someday, we hope to get all teachers an opportunity to get out of their classroom and into other classrooms. Because as we know, teachers work in isolation, not by choice, it's just the structures that we put in place sometimes in schools. And so we're really trying to break those structures. And the last thing, again, like I said, my ILT was doing this today, the ILT will assist in the full implementation of our school-wide instructional focus in our identified first evidence-based learning practice, which as we call the Think Now, in every classroom for every student. So this is for all students, so whether you're guided learning, or you're a special education student, or you're an honor student, that every student deserves a chance to get, you know, grade-level content. Second goal, by the end of 2021, '22 academic year, 100% of students at McKay Arts Academy will demonstrate accelerated growth in their ability to read critically and communicate their knowledge. So again, that goes on our main instructional focus. So some of the action items, again, we want to provide professional development related to our first evidence-based learning practice, the Think Now, which includes our previous work with Depths of Knowledge. So really, all Think Now is, it's just asking those higher-level questions or doing those higher-level activities and giving students the opportunity to express their answers. So it shouldn't be one-word answers, it should be full sentences, full paragraphs. But again, it's also giving the students the opportunity to discuss in class. Secondly, again, provide support to ensure equitable access for every student to access core instruction to accelerate learning. We want to make sure, and like, you know, Crocker and Rhine Gold do, you know, we do push-ins, so we're trying to keep kids in the classrooms as much as possible. So whether they're getting special education services or ESL services, they're part of the classroom and the school community. Okay? Too often, in education, we pull those students out for all these services, and they don't become part of the community, the school classroom community. And so we also like to make sure that all students, so again, all students, whether you're an honor student or a struggling student, that you get grade-level content. Third, administer informational writing prompts. So again, we're doing pre- and post-writing. So again, if we want to make sure kids are writing and improving, we got to make sure that we're doing pre- and post-type of work and taking a look at that work. And then the last one is assure the walkthrough tool developed during the 2020, '21 school year included elements of our school-wide instructional focus and evidence-based practice. So also ensure our walkthrough tool highlights the acceleration of learning with appropriate scaffolding. So again, making sure that when I'm going into classrooms, that we're focusing on the main thing. And that is that students are having opportunities to talk in class and get the opportunity to reading and writing in class. The last goal, again, by the end of the 2021, '22 academic year, the attendance and discipline rates of students at McKay Arts Academy will show positive trends as evidenced through increased attendance and decreased discipline referrals. So again, our focus really has been the attendance, because obviously, last year, there wasn't too many discipline, because pretty much everybody was home. So we really focused on attendance. And so the first one, provide new and untrained staff with professional development in responsive classrooms. So again, like the other principals talked about, it's a sense of belonging. So students want to come to school, they want a sense of belonging, so they got to want to come to school. We cannot help students if they're not in the classes. So we've been working really hard for my three and a half years there on attendance. And every teacher is trained in responsive classroom. Again, creating a sense of community in the homerooms and advisories, again, wanting students to come to school. Number two, homeroom teachers will continue to build ownership of learning with a positive community through daily morning meetings and advisories. Again, elementary has morning meetings, middle school has advisories, so they're, every day, students spend the first 20, 25 minutes with their homeroom teachers or before they go to specials. So again, that's the beginning of everybody's day. And the development of shared classrooms and norms, and then academic discourse protocols of practice during this time. So given, again, a chance to give a student voice, and again, access to all content all the time. Three, all staff will utilize proactive and reactive discipline techniques, including specific teacher language aligned with teacher expectations and reinforcing appropriate choices and decisions. Again, that's all responsive classroom, again, giving students choice and voice. That's basically what we're trying to do. And then again, continue to monitor daily attendance involving teachers, support staff, family, and partner agencies. So again, it's not just the principal. The principal can't just make students come to school. It has to be staff, families. We're really trying to start to engage families in this conversation, because again, our attendance rates were heading in the right direction, and then last year was a tough year for all the schools in attendance. So we're hoping to, and you'll see my goals that I set right after this, that we're hoping to go back to some of the goals that we set a year ago. So again, like the other schools, you know, there was a, there was a hit in MCAS data. So we give MCAS grades 3 through 8. So I didn't want to put all the different grades on there and all that, so I really combined it. So this is basically an average of grades 3 to 8. All right? So, and you have 2019 and 2021 up there. So if you look at all students, and I use the scale score, and I also use the student growth percentage. So all students in 2019, this is ELA, we had 25% meeting or exceeding with a scaled score of 486. And then this past year, we had meeting exceeding 24% with a scaled score of 44. So although we went down, we did not, we held our own for the most part in ELA. Equally disadvantaged went down a little bit, 42 to 480. Students with disabilities, we actually had a positive there, right? Where, so our scaled score was 462, and they went up to 468. Our Ls dropped a little bit. Our white population increased from 492 to 494. And then the high needs and Hispanic both dropped a little bit also. We also made some decent gains in student growth percentage. They did a different way and did the student growth percentage, and a lot of our student growths were in the high 30s. Really, the, you want to kick the field goal. We say you want to be between 40 and 60, that's kind of where you want to be. And a lot of our groups just missed that. We were 38, 39, so we were, we were right there. So our math data, we took a little bit more of a hit in math. Again, being a math teacher, I think, teaching math online, I think is very difficult for, I mean, teachers were reinventing education at the beginning of this. And trying to find a way to teach math online without kids in front of you is difficult. And I think students had a difficult time learning in the virtual world in math. So I think that's why you see statewide the biggest drop in math. So you can see, so we had a little bit of drop with students. Again, we had 482 for our scaled score and 475. And our meeting or exceeding dropped to 13%. So that's alarming. So again, again, following with the state's issues, we kind of ran into the same thing. And again, so not to beat the dead horse, but this, so each subgroup dropped down, you know, a little bit of percentage. So we know we have some work to do with that. And, you know, we're going to hit the ground running like we started to do the last few weeks, and hopefully, we can get back on track for where we were over a year ago. And the last slide is, just wanted to, again, I like to write things on paper, because we, you know, we talk about a lot of things. But I like to put it on paper, because it has more of a chance of becoming a reality. So, so 500 is kind of that mark that gets you out of probably above at least 10%, you probably get above 20%, you hit that 500 mark. So that's our goal. And it was our goal two years ago before COVID hit. So you can see our scaled score was 484 in 2021, and our goal again is to be, get to 500. And we're going to do this by, again, using some of our focus areas with accountable talk, Depths of Knowledge 3 and 4. We've implemented a K to 2 foundations, the whole district has done that. Our evidence-based learning practice, the Think Now, like I already talked about, the implementation of the new ELA curriculum, again, district-wide. And the use of iReady, K to 8, we're using that a lot more now. And then again, making sure that all students have access to grade-level work and literature. If you go all the way to the right, the math, kind of the same thing, so 475. 500 is that mark that you want to get to. And again, using, again, focused accountable talk, Depths of Knowledge, implementing iReady, K to 8, increased math interventions. We've added math interventions, especially at the middle school level, where they have academic support every day, where it's graded now, and it's a course. Where before, it was just kind of this thing that kids did, and now we make it a course. They do two days of iReady for ELA, they do two days of iReady for math, and then that fourth, that fifth day is used for teachers to meet with the students on an individual basis and see what they still need to, what help they need for that week. And then the middle column, again, is our chronic absenteeism. Again, like all schools, we took a hit. We were moving in the right direction of March of 2019, right before COVID hit. We were, we were in the, I think it was the 16th percentile for chronic absenteeism, which was amazing. And then COVID hit. And so it kind of set us back, so we were 28.9% this past year. I did, however, we don't know our goal set from the state yet, but I kept it at 20% for this coming school year, because I believe we can exceed that. So again, new attendance protocols that we've used has really made a difference, bringing different agencies, different agencies in, like DCF, MACH, those type of agencies have helped us work with the families to, again, it's about removing barriers. What can we do to help you to get your students to school? That's the biggest thing. If we can get them to school, then we can help them. So, and that is it.
So Mark, I'm just going to make a couple comments. So I guess, thank you for your presentation. Also, the attendance numbers, because we've been tracking them since you arrived there back in February of four years ago.
Yeah, that was my, one of my biggest, that was the first thing we tackled when I first got there, was the attendance. When I got there, we were at 30% chronic absenteeism, and that was February when I got there. So we got it from 30 to, I think it was 24 at the time, you know, just in those short months. In the following year, we had it down to 16%. You know, again, so we have some schools doing some amazing things, and we were trying to get to where they were at. We were 16%. Then COVID hit, and it's been the struggle ever since. You know, but we're, we're back to doing, you know, perfect attendance certificates, giving prizes once a month, and just trying to get kids, you know, excited about school.
The only thing that's tricky about that, right, is we also have this other message that if you don't feel well, you need to stay home. So I think it's tricky, because I heard this.
So that's my concern about the attendance this year is, and I've reached out to a few people, is, so we have people that are, you know, testing positive for COVID, so they have to stay home, right? That's 10 days. And then you have close, you know, close contacts, so they're staying home for a few days.
Yep.
And now you have the kids that are maybe just sick, you know, and they stay home. So you, but they're all lumped together in the same, you know, bucket.
Yeah.
So this is going to be very difficult at the end of this year to, to see where it really sits and how true this is. Because like you said, we're telling people, if you're not feeling good, you should stay home. Right? Where before, we used to say, if you don't feel good, you don't come in, you know, we'll see how you feel, we'll schedule you to the nurse, you know, you got to, you know, drink water, and we'll figure it out. So it is going to be another challenging year, you know. So it is gonna be another challenging year, you know, with, especially with the, the testing. But, you know, we're doing the best we can, and, you know, when kids are healthy, we have to make sure they're there when they're healthy, you know?
First of all, thank you all, four of you for presenting today. Very informative, and we, I appreciate it. Now, Mark, you're, you're a little different than your three colleagues because you go through grade eight.
They say about me, Mr. Wolf. Yes, I'm much taller than Casey, but yes.
Do we break out your numbers to reflect pre-K through four and five through eight for elementary and middle school to compare to your three colleagues for pre-K through four?
Yeah, so I do, um, you know, in my office, I get out, I look what Crocker does and South Street and Rheingold. In fact, when they had their numbers up there, I was writing them down, um, because I'm not too competitive, but, um, no, because I wanna see what we have to get to, right? And, you know, Crocker's been, you know, knocking out a park for many years, um, pretty consistent the last 20 years. So, you know, I've had many conversations with Casey over the years and Adam Renda when he was there. And, uh, you know, South Street was doing a great job with attendance a few years ago, so I was down there, but, you know, finding, what are you doing for attendance? So, you know, you don't have to work in isolation, find, you know, I've always, even as a coach, you know, find out what people are doing to win and go figure, go figure it out. So, uh, we have great things happening in the district. And, um, like I said, so I, I find out what people are doing well, and I go ask, what, what are you doing? And, and try to make it McKay. Again, we're kinda different, right? We have that, the pre-K to eight model, and our data is you lump together three to eight. Uh, but I do break it out, you know, grades three and four, that I look at their data, then I break out five to eight, and I look at Long Joes and memorials, because I try to make it apples to apples the best I can.
I wasn't sure when we do district-wide numbers for, for different grants, whether it's for pre-K through four or middle school, I'm wondering if we break out your school so that we have the numbers for the middle school equivalent that would be shown for the other two middle schools.
Yeah, so we can, we can do that, yeah.
Thank you.
Long day, you guys.
I guess my, my one comment question, um, I think my biggest question going into this meeting was, and hopefully for all of us, was just to see the visual representation of the gap from 2020 and what that reflected in the data and what kinda gap we were looking at. And I don't think, I, you know, I couldn't set any expectations, I don't think anybody could really measure what that was going to be. But my question is, um, and I know we should take all this with a grain of salt, um, but, you know, when I see a number like 30% of the students for a certain grade or meet are at the expectations, um, you know, when they move on to the next grade, I assume that that is being communicated to the, to that, you know, math teacher for the next year. That 60 or 70% of your students aren't where they need to be. So they need to start five steps back, and those 30% of students that are where they need to be, you know, they kinda face the burden for that. So, you know, does that snowball? Does that keep going? Are we really focusing on the communication of where these gaps are, especially when they're moving year to year? And I guess more centrally, the question is, you know, to the four principals here, to everybody, do we think that we have, you know, the resources, et cetera, to triage this gap this year? Or are we gonna continue to see a sizable gap, um, you know, something that's not acceptable, um, you know, year on and year out? Or do we need another district-wide intervention, like, or statewide intervention? Because I'm sure everyone else is seeing these numbers, like another summer program or so on.
I'll, I'll address your question from the district level. So Mark, McKay, Fitchburg High, and actually, all our schools now will be engaging with focus schools at one level or another, and as the district. Clearly, the pandemic has hit, uh, public education and learning across the state, across the country. Students, um, in urban districts were impacted greater than non-urban districts. Okay, this is the fact. Okay, so in terms of intervention, we had actually been, started work with focus schools to improve the results that, in Mark's case, we were already working on. Um, and it was impacted by the pandemic. So when you or anybody watching in T, on TV sees those third grade scores, some of those students hadn't been in our schools for a year and a half physically, first grade. So I want people to really just think about that. And that's just not in Fitchburg, that's in a lot of cities in Massachusetts, in a lot of school districts. So, um, again, as I, as I mentioned at the beginning, we should be, people watching, listening, should be looking at how COVID impacted students in Fitchburg, just representative of what happened. Uh, and that prior to COVID, um, we had started efforts across the district to have schools come out. And I guess I would say one example of that, as you heard the presentation from Justin Sparks, was you saw the, uh, the change in leadership at Rheingold, which at that, in 2018, was in the fourth percentile. With one year, with bringing in some good practices from Crocker Elementary, Dr. Renda brought that school from the fourth percentile to the 26th percentile. Now, one of the things that I didn't mention earlier that the commissioner expressly stated to the superintendent is, don't look at, you know, compare schools within your district to each other, and don't compare yourself to other districts. Because in every school has a different story last year. Okay, there were schools in, with multiple people who were unavailable. As we returned, again, people, uh, you know, had COVID or were just out for, uh, the normal health-related reasons. So every school and grade level, uh, teams could have been impacted. So it is hard to do that school-to-school comparison because it's, it's not like all the widgets are the same, so to speak. So I think, you know, what you heard tonight and you've seen, while at a, at a surface level, um, is concerning, again, consistent with our values of being vulnerable and looking at the data, having the conversation, not only here at school committee and public, but with these principals, with their instructional leadership teams, and shortly with the parents, you know, sharing the MCAS reports on their students, we're, we're embracing the challenge here. We know, this is almost like a reset button here for Fitchburg. We have never been as well-resourced, not only financially with the Student Opportunity Act and ESSR, but staff. We have clinical interventionist staff to help our schools with social emotional learning. And, uh, again, with the support of the school committee over the last year, and especially for the elementary grade levels, the, the new reading curriculum will have an impact. Uh, how fast will that happen? I don't think there's anybody in this room or in Boston, or I should say Malden, at the Department of Ed or across the country that can say, how fast will we get out of this? Again, going back to our values, and as for each of our principals here, the goal is to be growth-focused. Where our students are at today, it's not about remediation, it's about acceleration. And wherever they're at today, we're going to get them to a better spot at the end of this school year. And when next school year starts, we're gonna move them ahead some more. So that as the students progress in the future grades, we're not remediating.
I appreciate all that, and agreed on, on every point. I also think, you know, there's something to say, you know, Fitchburg with the mobility that we have in the community, with the economically disadvantaged, disadvantaged portion of the community, you can't underestimate how much pandemic, um, you know, those compounding effects and the burdens on the family. I know all of you know those kinda burdens because you hear about them every day, face to face. And not to also mention that these grades that we're looking at, third to fourth graders, I assume the loss of instructional value when you're going to Zoom from in-person is greater than middle school or high school. I get all that. Um, I guess like the question though is, although we're supposed to take this with a grain of salt and appreciate the greater context, you know, we can't look at all this with, you know, rose-colored glasses or just with the ambiguity of saying, you know, everybody's facing problems. Because if there is a difference between, I mean, and you can't measure us against other districts, especially their, how the pandemic affected their district, how they responded to the pandemic varies greatly. But I, I still think we, you know, although with all the salt-taking, we still need to be critical. Um, and I don't know when to expect these numbers to be back to what they were in 18, 19, so on and so forth. But like my, my question again is, do we have the resource? And you said we're very well-staffed and we have the resources that we need, but.
Let me clarify, so the staffing that, the, I'll tell you, the area that we are short on for resource as, as our, almost the entire nonprofit community and locally, the mental health community, is just in general staffing. We're short today 16 paraprofessionals across the district. So those are 16, uh, staff members who are to be assigned to one-on-one students. We have virtually no pool of substitutes. These two patterns are consistent across the state, across the country. Um, we're not asking for a pass. Everybody here knows what they signed up for. We're, we're up for the challenge, uh, as you heard clearly from Casey and Justin and Sue and Mark. Uh, we're competitive. These, these numbers in and of themselves, they're, they're not acceptable, but they happened during a pandemic.
Right.
So, uh, we're not, we're not asking for forgiveness, which I just wanna be clear.
Yeah.
Is we're up for the challenge, we, we have the people, the programs, and the resources, now we have to execute. And as, as, as several of the principals mentioned, you know, we, the transition of students back from being out of school for a year and a half is something that we and other school districts are, uh, working through right now. So that'll help, that'll dictate or influence the progress that we make this year.
I think my, my question is directly at that 30%, that was really notable. And is, if that, with that margin, is that going to snowball? You know, can we get that margin up to, is there a goal for that? Although we don't have an expectation to get it to 100. But I guess it's not that it's gonna be fixed in a year, Bob, it's more of, you know, do we have the resources to make sure it doesn't get worse? To make sure that this gap doesn't continue to snowball year after year, or just next?
Point, point taken. Uh, and I'll, I'll tell you, one of the con, conversations that we had with, uh, Carrie Purcell Focus Schools, who's not only working with the schools but with us, is if we set one goal district-wide, it's third grade literacy. Okay, because that is a harbinger of a student's trajectory in life. So this is beyond any assessment or test score that we're talking about today. This is what society will look like 20 years from now, 30 years from now, 40 years from now. So our elementary schools, our teachers, um, are as good as any, and actually, one thing that we did a couple of years ago meant more internally, and we just shared some of this, uh, analysis out as a district improvement team. We compared, uh, Crocker to a couple other, I'll say, peer-abutting communities' elementary schools. Okay, and two years ago, Crocker's scale scores, you know, the word, the magic number is 500, was better than each of those two school communities. I'm not here tonight to talk about what other school communities have done or how their scores went. But our teachers can and are getting better, better results in some of our peer communities who the perception might be because they're not an urban community, they're getting, they're receiving a better education. So, is that a clear, accurate? Casey?
Sorry, hi, Mark. Um, so I think the, the main point that we need to be really clear on is not just the, the remediation versus acceleration part. Um, I think the state's done a really good job of explaining that. I think, uh, the district has put us on the task of making sure we're clear with our staff. That really remediation can't happen. Um, we can't just start five steps backwards. We have to be able to start where we need to start and give the kids a scaffold with that grade-level curriculum that they have the right to, to be at. And I think that's the way we're gonna try and make sure that it doesn't snowball out of control. Um, and I think that's with co-teaching, I think that's with, with just great teaching and best practices. I think it's really the acceleration versus remediation part, that if we, we have to, if we have one thing to be crystal clear on for us and for our staff, is that we, we, it's unacceptable to just stop and go backwards, and so.
And I think, just to expand too, you know, with the initiatives that you just talked about, Casey, and I think it came up during Justin's presentation about coaching and athletes get coaching, but actually, all our teachers are coaches. And it's about individual coaching all our students, um, to achieve the best that they can. So, um, that's, that's our focus, and, uh, you know, I'm, I'm looking forward to a year from now when, uh, you know, at least from a, some numbers perspective, things, things are going to get better. We have a plan in place, we have the people. By law, I should say, we, by law, we have most of the people, again, aside from the, the shortages that we and every other district are facing. Um, now, now it's a matter of, again, execution and also the, the point of making our students and families feel welcome and belonging in our schools so that they're ready to learn, um, can't be understated as well. That's, that's a huge, not only intangible, but it, it is tangible.
We've been, we spent a while telling them they're not welcome, right? I mean, Bob, I've heard Bob say that multiple times, like, you can't come to school. And even in certain areas, now, we're still telling them. So getting that, that message back out, that people are welcome into school, and they, we want them a part of this whole journey.
And it's safe.
And that it's safe.
Safe, that we're doing a good job trying to keep everybody safe and so.
Yep.
Well, thank you, thank you all for your, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, any, any other questions for any of the principals here?
No, thanks.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
If not, I'm just going to transition over to, uh, Mr. Shalfo to talk about the, the budget items on tonight's agenda, the, the donations from McKay, the grants to be submitted, and, uh, then the ESSR funds.
Thank you, Mr. Jokla. Um, we do have a number of action items before the committee this evening. The first being a donation that was submitted by Ms. Prosser over at McKay, she's the administrative assistant. This is from Highland Baptist Church, estimated value of $50, and it's a variety of school supplies, pencil boxes, notebooks, erasers, sharpeners, um, paper masks, and cleaning supplies. We have three grants to be submitted. The first is for $25,000. This is a competitive opportunity through the Bar Foundation and in, um, along with the, the new teacher project, and this is for the recruitment of a more, more diverse workforce. The second one is a targeted assistant grant, that is $95,000. And, and again, this is the grant that we have been submitting each year for the last, uh, several years. This is for turnaround practices at Long Joe Fitchburg High School and McKay. The third grant to be submitted, actually, there's no value, uh, dollar value on it, but it's a pilot program for superintendent leaderships. This is to address, um, working with peers and key ideas about race, unconscious bias, structural racism, equity in anti-racism leadership. And again, that is just for the superintendents. We have a number of grants to be accepted, the first being $50,000. Um, and that's, uh, special state legislative, uh, earmarked to Fitchburg High School. And that is for the career readiness program around environmental science and water. Uh, second one, $30,000, it's early college support grant. Again, that's through Fitchburg High School, and that's the development, uh, sustainment of the early college work that's been going on for the last several years. Um, and then we have our title grants, and, and the last time we presented, we had estimates, but these are for the specific amounts. Title one, $2.7 million, and this is to support ELA math remediation in all schools. We have our title two A for $303,689, and that will fund portion of literacy and math coaches and mentoring, induction facilitators. Title three grant, $145,645 supports our, uh, English language learners. And then the title four grant, $159,385, and this is well-rounded educational opportunities, safe and healthy students, and to support effective use of technology. We have one last request in front of the committee this evening, and that is for us to use a portion of our ESSR funds to help, um, supplement our custodial services to provide building access for some of our local community groups, including, uh, but not limited to, our basketball, rec department. Um, AYF cheerleaders has also put in a, uh, request to use buildings. This will, because of COVID, our buildings are not open until 10:00 in the evening, which they typically have been. They've been closing at approximately 6:00 o'clock, aside from Fitchburg High School, which I believe now. Aside from Fitchburg High School, which I believe now has moved to a regular 10:00 o'clock, so that would not necessarily impact Fitchburg High School. We've estimated that value of somewhere between $22,000 and $25,000 potentially. And again, we already had ESER-funded money earmarked for custodial support, but we thought it was important to present this in front of the committee because the specific uses it so that we can maintain the building access for our community groups in the evening.
Ms. Reynolds?
Oh, let's clear my throat.
You had a question on 21-100?
I, I do, I don't want to bundle them all. I'd like to take the...
Well, you can speak on this now, if you'd like to.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So I, I would like to, let me see, 21, 100, number 20 to 21 to be considered separately from the others.
Well, you'd have to put that in the form of a motion and we'll...
I make the motion that that be separated out.
We hold 21...
We tend to bundle these things, and I anticipated that somebody would suggest...
21-100, you want held out? Do I have a second?
Please, I have a quick clarification. Does held off mean held off, not voted on tonight, or held out, voted on from the, separate from the bottom?
Yeah, you want to discuss this separately from the other items.
Yes, I'd like to separate from the...
Now. Right?
Yes.
Do I have a second? No second? All in favor? No, there is no vote. No vote? No second. The, that request fails. Action items 21-99 up through and including 21-102 to be bundled.
Make a motion to bundle.
Motion made to bundle. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Reynolds is in opposition. It passes.
Make a motion to approve the bundle 21-99 through 21-102.
Motion made and seconded to bundle 21-99 up through and including 21-102. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
One in opposition. Thank you. It passes. An executive session is not necessary at this time?
It is not necessary this evening. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Seconded.
Made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Good evening.